Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls City Council Meeting for Tuesday, November the eighteenth to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Holst?
Here.
Johnson is absent. Mattson?
Here.
McCusker?
Yes.
Schoblum?
Here.
And Mayor Robinson?
Here. I'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Meeting on this January, I mean, November night. Feels like it out there. This time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda submitted.
So moved. I'll second.
Have a... Motion by Bill, second by Ron. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. That moves us on to item five of the seating, public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Since we have an empty house, we'll move on. At this time, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items on this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For the folks at home, I will read the consent agenda. Item A is the adjusting correct claims for the accounting period ending November the fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Item B is approved pay requests for, number one, for Second Street Southwest Street Project. Item C, approved pay request number two for the Second Street Southwest Water Main Project. And item D, approved financing plan for various projects. Are there any items anybody wishes to bring down?
D.
They will bring item D, and that will become item seven A. Any others? If not, Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item D, approval of financing for various projects.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion by Bill, second by Ron. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Carries.
All right, that moves us on to item seven A, which is approved financing plan for various projects.
Some questions for you on that, Ron. The sixty-five thousand, I think it was, that's coming out of the water fund reserve, sixty-two thousand. How much is in that reserve roughly?
The wat- the water fund is in better shape than the sewer fund is.
Right. And I guess that's my concern with that, is that with us having to raise that every year, where does, if we take that sixty-two thousand out of there, where does that leave us? Are we gonna have to raise it more, or is it gonna stay about where it's projected? That was my concern with that.
I would say the sixty-two thousand, although that's a fairly large sum of money, is probably, it'll be thrown into the formula. We've got a meeting set up with elders to review rates, you know, to do an analysis again, coming up either next week or the following. Tomorrow? Is it tomorrow already? Okay. Tomorrow. And so we'll see, but, I mean, that's gonna be, we'll have to take that into consideration when looking at rates, but...
Yeah, I guess my concern is, our water bills, when I started out on the council, were about eighteen to twenty dollars a person. It seemed like it ran to pay for your water sewer bill. And now it seems like we're up to about thirty-five. Supposedly, while I've been on here, we've only raised it like six or eight percent. So it seems like our water bills are getting high. So my concern was, is that if we took that reserve out of there, that we wasn't raising that water bill another one or two percent on top of what's already been projected. Because to me, if we're gonna be fifty percent on the budget, which I think is a good thing, it's also around twenty-six or twenty-seven thousand, it's about one percent of our budget each year. So if we did have to take more out of the general fund, and that would be roughly three percent, and knock it down to, say, forty-seven thousand instead of fifty, and not have to do anything different with that water sewer fund, I would like to try to do that versus taking that money out of there. And the one good thing I want to point out with the water sewer fund is, is that we do need to build a reserve up there, but you also remember that one of the biggest emergencies we had last year was the Second Street. I believe it's Second up by First English. That's one of the biggest things we've had in a lot of years, emergency stuff. And I think we're, with the new way of doing things, we're probably in a lot better shape to avoid that kind of stuff this year. And eventually, the city is gonna be in a position here where we have the new maids, and we have the new water cowers. So I don't think it's such an important thing to keep such a big reserve either at this time. So I just wanted to point that out while we're talking about it. The other thing is, the one that struck me funny was the library cost overruns. I thought we had dealt with that before, clear back when Aaron was here, so I was kind of wondering why this has come up again.
It was discussed at that point, and that was included in the memo that Aaron had put together previously on some of the general fund reserve uses, but it had never actually taken place. So we've just carried that forward until now, when we're actually implementing it and gonna include it in this. So it's not in addition to that, it's just the same amount.
Okay. The other question I had for you is that on the billing, billing out of Mayo Clinic, on the three eight, is it three eighteen project, that short road out there? Have they been billed out for that now, so they know where they're at, and if any of them paid ahead of time? Or don't they get noticed till they get their tax statements or something?
They signed an assessment agreement, and in that assessment agreement, it says it will go on their property taxes beginning in two thousand and fifteen.
Okay.
They do have the option to pay it ahead if they so choose.
So the last people we had that came to us and didn't realize that, are we sending out statements so they know that now? Or are we still going with the old way where you find out after it's out of your taxes?
Leroy, I think you're making a mistake versus our four twenty-nine process versus a special assessment where the property owners agree in advance. So you want to keep those two?
Well, I think Ron knows what I mean there.
Yeah, but these are definitely, Councilmember Duncan's right, that these are definitely different situations, where these are specific agreements that they entered into with the city rather than going through the four twenty-nine process.
Right, but also...
We can notify them most certainly, that...
Right. And I think we should do that from now on, but my thing is, if we do this now, and we get the money back from them, say in February, or March, or April, whenever the taxes are due, and they pay it then, so where does that money go? Does it go back in the general fund? Or as long as we aren't bonding for this, where do we go with that money when it comes back?
When it comes back, it will go into the general fund, but we don't have a guarantee that we're gonna get that lump sum payment in one time. They have that option. It would actually have to be paid by the end of this year if they want to do that, otherwise it will be spread out over, I believe it's ten years. They can prepay it in full at any time after it's assessed, but we haven't received any word from them that that's what they're going to do. So it could be over a ten-year period. So until we get any notification, we have to assume it's gonna go out over ten years.
Okay. Okay, so we're still better off to go this way. If it's gonna be that way, and we don't, if it's gonna be paid over ten years, we're still better off to go this way versus just bonding for it, making the payments on it? Okay.
Just a clarification. Normally, when we do projects that involve water or sewer, we generally apportion a percentage based on what was needed. In this case, with Leroy's concern about the water fund reserves, that was apportioned because of the water main works that we did. There wasn't any sewer involved in that.
That's correct. And when this was done, I believe the council had actually approved the full amount being paid from the water, and so we're actually reducing the amount from the water.
Right.
I know when we talked about this with our financial advisor, we did look at those numbers, and we did feel comfortable with them at that time.
Yeah, 'cause I believe we were talking like eighty-some thousand, or something like that, back, back a while?
Seventy thousand.
Oh, okay. And when we go, once we go with this, what will be our reserve balance?
If we implement everything that's on here, it will be about fifty percent of the amount that was in the general fund reserves as of December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen. Because you have to take a date and use that as a snapshot, because that's a fluid number that changes.
Do we know what that amount was?
Four hundred and thirty-five, somewhere right around.
That's what it'll leave. Okay, that's what it will leave?
Yes.
Okay.
As of that date. Today, it may, you know, I mean, it's all fluid, but yeah.
I mean, it will, I mean, that's how much we'll have left, or is that how much we're gonna take it from that? Because you got me confused here, I mean...
I'm confused by your question.
Well, I mean, what is our general fund reserve right now? I mean, do we know? I mean, how can we build a budget if we don't know?
Right.
Well, as of right now, I mean, we have...
I mean, I'm not getting any numbers from anybody except for this. I'm not, you know, all I'm getting is a percentage. I want to know numbers.
Okay. As of two thousand, or December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen, our unassigned general fund balance was one point nine million dollars.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Yep. Two thousand and fourteen budget was two point nine million dollars. So that left us with sixty-six percent in our general fund reserves.
Okay.
So in order to spend that down to fifty percent, we have to spend about four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay, that answered my question.
Any other discussion?
Back to the, back to the discussion on the, using the water reserve funds, that was, that was really what I understood the direction from council at our meetings where we talked about this, is that you most certainly didn't want to bond for it, didn't want to issue debt for that project, and then that the water portion of it would be paid for by water reserve, water fund reserves, are in my understanding.
That's what, that's what it was. That we didn't want to bond for, and go into any further debt for it.
Well, my thing is, hopefully, the budget comes back around zero again. The worst scenario is, rather than raising the levy, I would rather even lower the general fund another percent or two and put that money back in there, if it was a concern of ours. That's the only point I'm trying to make about that. Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, the Chair will take a motion to approve the financing plan to cover the library cost, three hundred and eighteen street project, Second Street Southwest Street Project, Second Street Southwest Water Main Project, the Third Street Cannon Improvement Project, the River Road Improvement Feasibility Study, and the West Side Two Improvement Project Feasibility Study by utilizing general fund reserves of approximately three hundred and eighty-eight thousand from the decertification of tax district. Number two oh one of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and a transfer of the two hundred and thirteen, East Side Bond Issue Construction Fund of a hundred and thirty thousand, and water fund reserves of sixty-two thousand.
I'll make that motion, and I'll second.
Have a motion by Mills, by Bill, second by Rod. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. That moves us on to item eight, which is reports. Greg?
Tom? Well, as you know, winter's here now, but like it or not, but as far as the skating rink, if you get the question posed to you, we're not there yet. We're not to the point where the ground's cold enough. But I was getting calls like the first day, it got to be thirty-two degrees, but we're, we don't want to make the structure in this, lose it again. Quite time consuming to get it there, and I just don't want to do it. A good year, we're probably there by mid-December, early December at the earliest, but we're not there yet, so just want to let you know if you get any questions on it.
Justin?
Just a couple of things. Our water leak problem at the library has been solved once again, so we look forward to seeing the results of that in spring. And two programs to highlight at the library, one, including Mayor Robinson, will be reading Twas the Night Before Christmas next Saturday at two P M. to the children in Cannon Falls. And a larger project that the library and the Cannon Falls Arts Board have been working on. In two thousand and fifteen, we're going to issue, or we've already started, a community arts challenge. And it will be based on the seasons in Cannon Falls, and people are encouraged to express their artistic talent in different mediums throughout the year. We have more information on this at the library, but what we're hoping to do is encourage local artists to express their talent and show off their talent to the community, and it will be a contest, and the winning artwork will be permanently displayed at the library.
Justin, did you get any input from the folks at Art Org?
He's part of the Arts Board. Dave?
Okay. Dave Mahachek.
He's part of the Arts Board.
Got anything?
I think next council meeting, there'll be some equipment requests, and so just save it till then.
Chief?
A couple of things I wanted to update the council residents about. This last Monday, and then two Mondays ago, I spent part of the day with Goodhue and Dakota County, as well as state and some federal agencies, going through some Billsby Dam tabletop exercises, and then this last week, a practical exercise. And the good news is, is that, you know, we're practicing how we would handle should a disaster impact the dam. More importantly, it gets all of the different agencies together, so we establish those connections, those relationships before anything happened. And, you know, we're prepared for it, but it also helps us in other ways. If you recall, when we had the presidential visit, of having the same relationships, made it very easy to reach out and get the support and assistance we needed. So if we have some other type of disaster, whether it's water-related, a tornado, whatever, these same relationships will, will be connections that we can use in times of an emergency. And so I just wanted to let you guys know that we're constantly working on that, staying up to date in what's going on. I know that with the project that they completed this spring, they're talking about next spring doing some dam open house for public officials and that type of stuff. As that comes up, I will make sure that people is informed of when. I'll let the city administrator know, and he'll get it off to you guys, if you're interested. And then second, as the mayor alluded to, it's getting cold. Before we know it, we'll be into the holiday seasons, but rapidly approaching is Thanksgiving, followed by Deck the Falls on Saturday, the twenty-ninth. So I just want to remind people that this year, so far, they have over twenty units. They're working out the details on it. I'll be talking with Pat next week, firm everything up. But there will be some delays in traffic along County Road twenty and Highway twenty as we work the Deck the Falls Parade detail around to the city parking lot. Just ask people to be patient. We usually are pretty good about providing workaround routes for them, but just want to make sure everybody, sure everybody's aware, it's always a good parade, not nearly as long as the fourth, because it's chilly outside, but it's very good. That's all I have.
Ron?
I would like to do a belated introduction. Mike Guthrie is our interim ambulance director, has been serving in that capacity for about five years now, it seems like, Mike. Yeah, he's been doing a really nice job. So you can welcome Mike aboard. We'll have him on board for a little while yet. The director search, we're receiving applications. We're hoping to interview perhaps the week of December eighth. We've got to firm up a date with that, and that's all I have.
Nothing. I have nothing.
Oh, sorry, you got a list. I went to the Southern Minnesota Initiative Fund down Treasure Island last weekend. I went there 'cause I guess I felt I was on the council. I got the invitation, I had to do it. But I went there, and I thought I would see some more Cannon Falls people there. It was a good meeting. All the different towns in Goodhue County were there. The one thing I was disappointed about is that it was a hundred thousand dollar giveaway that day, and you could, you could petition them that day for all the things that were going on. I did enjoy the fact that I met different EDA directors and stuff from different towns, and listened to concerns of other people. They petitioned for what they needed money. They petitioned for what they needed money for in all the other little towns, and it was basically kinda the same thing that we had. Uh, but I thought about our projects that we have going, the, the mural project on the post office someday, the trail connections when they eventually get the Billsby Crossing done out there. Uh, I think about the police transfer station that we need. I think about, uh, homeless shelters that I have concerned about. Um, I think about, uh, the drop-off road we'd like to put at Hannah's Bend maybe someday to help with canoe launching and for Welch Village to make it safer. Uh, so I thought about all the places, um, that if we had people from our departments there, whether it's the library or historical society or the police department, um, it would've been nice to have somebody there, because, uh, Leroy is not a, a good petitioner and smoother person. So, uh, next year, I'd highly recommend that we try to get somebody from the city, uh, to go to that thing. And it's, I've already gotten the information on the one for next year. So I think it's a good way, it's a good way to get grant money, um, and it's good to look into it, so I just wanted to bring that up. The other thing for Ron, um, the, the person for that old Saratoga out there stopped me at the end of the day here um, and said that, uh, the road that goes from the Cullisack to the Old Twenty-four did not get plowed at the last snow. And I said, I will pass that on, but I said, it could be county, it could be township, um, and maybe things haven't been worked out right, but I said, I'll pass that on. He also asked me if there was any lighting going in on the back service road, the new road that they put in. He said, uh, it's really dark back there with no street lighting, and I said, I will pass both them on to Ron, and, uh, he'll get back to your, look into it. So that covers what I got.
Okay. Jay?
Nothing. Just wanna say, I, I went to the, uh, high school and the elementary school on Veterans Day and, and spoke there on both days, and, uh, I felt the students were, uh, very attentive and enjoyed the program, and I just wanna say thanks to the schools for inviting us to do that and, uh, 'cause veterans sacrificed a lot for, uh, so that we can live free. So with that, Chair will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. I'll second.